To the Livonia City Council, the Honorable Kathleen McIntyre will lead us in the pledge to your rights.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Councilwoman. We'd like to welcome you to the February 27th study session of our Livonia City Council. This meeting sets the agenda for the 1,964th regular meeting, which is a voting meeting that will take place on Monday, March 13th of this year, where tonight's items will be officially voted on. If you would like to participate in this evening's agenda items that we take up, please approach the podium to my left or the podium to my right, and you will then be asked to please state your name and address for the record. We have just one council absence. Council President Jolly did have some other engagement this evening and won't be with us. I have no announcements from the chair, any from the council members. Yes, please, Councilwoman Donovan.
Thank you, Vice President Toy. I forgot to mention something during the regular. I just wanted to say hats off to everyone in DPW and DTE and consumers' workers throughout the whole power outage situation. Many residents in Livonia experienced it across Metro Detroit. I think at some point there was roughly 500,000 Michiganders without power and roughly 15,000 were right here in Livonia. So I know DPW was working diligently to remove some of those trees and working with our utility partners. I know a lot of the department heads were working with them. The administration was in constant contact with city council, constantly keeping us up to date with what DT was doing and working really hard to get that resolved. It's never fun losing power. I myself lost power Friday until Sunday. Fortunately, I was out of town, so that worked out pretty well for me. But I know a lot of people were having trouble with their power. I lost a few things in my fridge, like many people did, but it was nice to see that everyone was working really hard to get everything back up and running. So thank you to all of them. Thank you, Madam Vice President.
You're more than welcome. And we particularly, as you said, want to thank those line people that go up with all that nice ice and rain and every other weather we've had. We do live in Michigan. Some people still don't have power in Livonia, and we do have some accommodations that the city has made. And if you have any problems with that, either call the mayor's office or our office, and they'll be happy to give and help you direct your neighbor or your friends of how best they can, you know, work it out. DTE does have a phone number that you can call as well. I know I was out of power for, it just came on last night, through Wednesday night. So it is frustrating, very much so, as Councilman Donovan has referred that. I also want to make mention, council, and I know Councilwoman McIntyre was there, the senior center puts on a Valentine's Day festivity every year since I've been around, and many, many other activities. They'll do one for St. Patty's Day and a lot of events. Those folks over there, and I know Mr. Davis is their director, but they do a fabulous, fabulous job of, for our seniors that sign up and buy tickets and things like that. And if you ever have an opportunity to see that, it's really something else. And others chip in and give them cookies and candy, and all the diabetics go away happy. So, you know, it's quite, it's quite well done and well attended, and they deserve everything they get, that's for sure. I will now, if there's no other communication from my colleagues, will go to audience communication. Anyone wishing to address the council, you have three minutes, and Councilwoman McIntyre will do the timing. Good evening. Your name?
Hi, Deb Christensen, Livonia resident.
Yes.
So in two days, it's going to be March, and then three months after that, it's going to be Pride Month. And I am wondering where, besides my residence, can we, as a city, fly the pride flag? This was discussed last year, and I haven't heard another word about it. So council discussed putting this over to, what is it called, study? And to make sure that we have a place where we can recognize groups. And I'm waiting. So, thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Anyone else from the audience wishing to make comment? Questions? Hearing none, then, we'll go to our agenda for this evening. This is a study session, as we said earlier. So item one is under new business council, and it's a request to waive the city's noise ordinance. There's a gentleman here from Knights of Columbus.
Yes, good evening. My name is Robert Race. My address is 39499 Northwind Court. I'm a member of the Dr. Thomas A. Dooley Knights of Columbus and an old-time Bentley Bulldog.
All right.
Thank you.
You had an approving already? No, I'm teasing. I'm only kidding. Yeah.
Okay, we're asking for a waiver of the noise ordinance for our June 3rd car show. It's our sixth annual car show. So we've received approval in the past, and I'm hoping it'll continue. It's from nine o'clock until 3:00 in the afternoon. Music will be provided by a DJ. So it shouldn't be noise, it should be entertaining. Everything from the Everly Brothers to ABBA to you name it.
Wow. Okay, Councilman Barr.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. This has come before us year after year, and I understand it's been a successful event. If there are any issues, I'd be happy to offer an approving for consent, if there's no objection.
Great. Councilman Barr, as you've heard, is offering an approving. Anyone else on the council on consent? Oh, Councilman, yes, go right ahead.
Thank you, Vice President Toy. I believe council member, Council President Jolly is a member of the Knights of Columbus.
Yes, he is.
He always eagerly looks to offer the approving for this. So I know he'll be excited about the future success of this event this year.
Thank you.
Great, great, okay. Well, thank you very much for coming in. Much success. You don't have to come back. It's on consent, meaning it'll go, hopefully, right through.
Thank you very much.
You're very welcome. Much success to you. Was there anyone from the audience wishing to speak on that item before we leave? No? Seeing none, great. We'll move on to item two. It's a waiver petition from our planning commission. Petition 2022-12-0221 submitted by EROPLLC requesting to redevelop the site, including demolishing the existing restaurant, Archie's, and constructing a new automated auto wash facility called Whitewater Express at 30471 Plymouth Road, located on the south side of Plymouth Road between Middle Belt Road and Melbourne Avenue in the northwest quarter of Section 35. Is Jeff here this evening? No, you're not Jeff. I know, but...
Good evening. Yes, I'm not Jeff. My name is Erin McMacan. I'm a civil engineer with Stonefield Engineering and Design here tonight representing the applicant EROPLLC.
Great, welcome, Erin. Is there questions or did you want to present, Mr. Toramina?
I'm happy to give some background on this.
Please, would you?
So as you indicated, this is a request to redevelop the Archie's Restaurant site, which is on the south side of Plymouth Road, just east of Melbourne Avenue. The site is about three-quarters, one and three-quarters of an acre in size, has 125 feet of frontage on Plymouth Road. The zoning is C2 general commercial, which treats auto wash facilities as a waiver use. The restaurant building, as you can see from this aerial photograph, is located near the front of the property. That building's about 5,925 square feet. Site has two access points along Plymouth Road. Restaurants have operated at this location since the late 1960s. To the east, west, and north, there are commercial properties. And then to the south, residential homes that are part of the Devonshire Park subdivision. The restaurant would be demolished, and a new car wash facility, about 3,750 square feet, would be built in the same general location. Ingress and egress would continue to, excuse me, be provided from the two existing driveways. The west driveway would allow for two-way traffic, whereas the east driveway would only be for vehicles exiting the car wash. You'll note that on the west side of the property, there's a 24-foot wide aisle. This is where the cars would stack and proceed to the car wash. That aisleway widens to three lanes for the pay kiosks. These are the point-of-sale locations that would have digital menu boards as well as self-serve pay stations. They would also have covered canopies. Those are operated, there's automatic gates that would then control the vehicles. This lane then tapers to a single lane and then turns back north where the cars would enter the south side of the car wash facility. The building would be set back 57 feet from Plymouth Road, approximately 260 feet from the rear property line. The ordinance requires 20 parking spaces. This plan provides for 24 parking spaces, 19 of which would be vacuum spaces, self-serve vacuums. The five remaining stalls would be used for employees. There's five additional parking spaces, but these, this is part of an easement provided to the adjacent commercial business Midas. So while there's these five additional spaces, these really would not be used in connection with the car wash operation. The building itself would be almost all masonry with some cement fiber panels along the top. You can see the colors here, several small window openings on both sides of the building, and then obviously the garage doors on the front and the rear of the building. It is a one-story structure, about 23 feet in overall height. Site storm water would be retained underground. There is a fully detailed landscape plan that was submitted with the application. It shows plantings along the front, the sides, and the rear of the property. In addition, they are proposing some of the PRDA-style streetscape improvements in the form of brick piers and ornamental fencing along Plymouth Road. The plantings along the rear, so along the rear, there's a 50-foot wide green belt between, at the closest point, between this driveway and the property line. And along the property line, there is a five-foot-high or thereabouts masonry wall adjacent to that. On the commercial side of the wall, there's a three-to-four-foot-high berm that's planted with evergreen trees. And additional plantings are being shown on the plan. The planning commission is asking that additional trees be provided in this area. So we have not seen those revised plans, but that is something that is a requirement of the resolution that was provided by the planning commission. As I said, the planning commission approved this. They did limit the hours of operation from 8:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. And they also want all of the exterior lights turned off or dimmed between the hours of 8:30 p.m. and 7:30 a.m. And with that, Madam Chair, I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you so much. Yes, go right ahead.
Thank you, Madam Vice President. Mr. Toramina, thanks for that readout. A few questions. One of the questions was, the current structure is 5,900 square feet, the building, and the new structure would be roughly 30-some-hundred square feet? So it's a smaller building?
Slightly smaller building, yeah.
Okay. And the ordinance calls for 20 vacuum, or 20 parking spots. All of those parking spots have a vacuum or just...
No, 19 of the 24 spaces would have vacuums. The other five would be used for employees.
Madam Vice President, is it okay to go to the petitioner?
Mm-hmm, please.
Thank you for being here tonight. We talked about stormwater retention, so all the water is being retained on the site?
Yeah, right now, we're not showing any detention, given, I believe it's an MDOT right-of-way. We'll work with MDOT on, you know, both our access points and our storm water. The existing site is nearly 100% impervious, asphalt pavement, cracking conditions, and so our proposed site plan will increase the green space on-site and reduce flows to that storm system. So right now, we're not showing any detention, but MDOT could require that you meet the city or county stormwater standards, and in that case, we most definitely will provide detention per the requirement.
And I'm happy you mentioned that, because I'm familiar with the site. I live close by, and I've driven it recently. That site is essentially all asphalt back there, and I was present at the planning commission meeting. I heard a lot of the initial remarks, and I'm super impressed with the site plan, because you've added a ton of grass here. Again, the existing green belt from the residence to the south is maybe 15 feet, if that, not even, and this now is going to be 50 feet. That's just in that direct drive line, but if you go to the west, there's even more grass all the way up to that parking lot to the west that is shared by the business next door. So there's a ton of green space added here. We talk about enhancements up and down Plymouth Road. You're voluntarily adding the brick pillars and fencing that we see consistent along the corners. I mean, I can't say enough good things about this site plan. I know there's been a lot of discussion about it, but the owners of Archie's want to sell their building. They've been able to structure a deal with your company, with the company representing, to sell their building. And when we talk about enhancing the Plymouth Road corridor, we're taking down an older building, a brand-new state-of-the-art facility. So I think this is an exciting project. I think that the site plan was thoughtfully thought out, adding a lot of green space. I would like to see if you could maybe minimize, this is me personally, minimize some of that green space between the parking lot and the drive aisle. I can't tell how much feet is in between there, and I know there's some discussion there about making that left turn. I know there's some actual data there and engineering background, but it would be nice to see if you could try to increase that green space, just to buffer more green space to the residence to the south. I know at the planning commission, you mentioned adding more trees, and I believe your new site plan will indicate that, because there's some of those trees back there are dying. They've been there many years. But I would like to see those trees, that planning commission was really great with that, making sure to replace some of those dead trees, and then if you could, maybe lessen some of that green space, that's just my opinion, and add some more green space to that buffer to the south. Thank you. Thank you, Madam Vice President.
Thank you. Councilman McCullough.
Thank you, Vice President. Through the chair to Mr. Toramina, if I may. Okay, so I've got a few questions. I absolutely love and hate this, because I miss Archie's, and that was, I've been going there for years, but I totally get it. The plan is wonderful. We're replacing an old building, we're going to be building new. The questions that I do have is, you mentioned the lighting would be off, or the business hours would be closing at eight, correct?
That is correct.
What about the dryers? Are the dryers going to be required to be off? Did planning ask for that? I know we just approved another business that we had some form of stipulations. I just want to make sure we're being standard across the board.
Well, I know that issue was addressed at the meeting, and the answer is yes, they were going to be turned off along with the auto wash at the same time. I just want to make sure the resolution itself addresses that. It does. So condition number three does limit the hours, including the vacuums, from 8:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m.
Okay. The other thing that I see on the site is, and forgive my vision, but the vacuums, those go all the way down pretty close to that last parking spot. Is that a dryer all the way down?
It would be, yes.
Have we had any sound study on the decibels that would be going into the neighborhood for those specific dryers? Those are the only concern I have. I see that they're loaded. I know that that's an amenity that is needed. It's just a matter of, I just want to make sure that, you know, it's not going to travel too far to the people that abut to the south.
Understood. And that, those questions came up at the planning commission, and I think the petitioners will provide additional information, but it's my understanding that these, the system is centralized. So the noise that would be produced from the vacuum systems is really limited to this area further on the north of the site, near the entrance. But I'll let, I'll let her...
And then one last question for you, if I may, is that buffer to the south being 50 feet, is that the current, what's our current setback requirement? Is it 50 feet? Or is there a setback requirement?
From the residential, I'm going to say the building setback minimum is 20 feet.
Which we have more than enough here.
262 feet is what's proposed for the building itself. Yes, the 50-foot is for, is between that, again, the property line to the closest edge of this driveway.
And then have we heard any dissent from any of those neighbors behind there? Have you guys spoke with them? Well, you know, should I say, maybe we go to the petitioner?
Well, there was, yeah, so a resident behind this facility was present at the planning commission meeting, did express his concerns regarding noise, lighting, and buffering, and he may even be in the audience this evening. I'm not sure.
Okay. Vice President, if I may, go to the petitioner?
Please.
So yes, the decibels.
Yes, so if you can see the bypass lane just before you enter the wash, kind of the little cut-through to the vacuum area, on either side, there's a rectangle that's a concrete pad for the central enclosure. There's one for each row of vacuums. That's where a majority of the noise is going to come from, and that's screened by a six-foot masonry wall that's going to match both the building and the trash enclosure, and then the evergreen trees throughout the site. Whitewater hasn't done a noise study on this property, but they have on others, and how they express the noise level is that when it is screened, it's no louder than the traffic on Plymouth Road, especially given...
So it's almost like a central vacuum, wow, that's pretty cool.
Correct, yep.
I guess I've never, all right, no, that, like I said, I think the plan's great. Sad about Archie's, but, you know, we gotta, we gotta make a decision based on this. I'd be happy to offer an approving for regular, just to get a motion out there. And again, thanks for the detailed packet. It's great, and thanks for answering those questions.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. Anyone else from the council before we go to the audience? Seeing no one, unless you have another comment?
No, nothing here. Just thank you guys for your time tonight.
We'll come back to you in a minute. Anybody from the audience like to speak to item two? Okay, I guess not. Unless you have any concluding remarks? No? I too really hate to see Archie's go, because they take senior citizen discounts.
I know that they do want to stay in Livonia. They've been looking to downsize for a while, so maybe a space that fits them better, but they definitely would hope to keep serving Livonia.
I've heard that. They haven't found anywhere yet, have they?
Not that I know of yet, but I know that they're looking hard.
Okay, and there's no one here from Archie's tonight?
No, the owner's real estate representative and his son were at the last two planning commission meetings, supporting us along the way, so...
Oh, sure. Well, you did a great job for them.
Thank you so much.
You're very welcome. Okay, so you have an approving on the regular, meaning we will vote on it then, okay, on the 27th, no, the 13th, Monday, the 13th of March?
Okay.
Okay?
Thank you.
All righty, thanks again. All right, we did have an approving on a regular. Okay. If there's nothing else, then we'll go on to item three, which is a waiver petition brought to us again by our planning commission. Petition 2023-01-02-01, excuse me, submitted by Aviat Acupuncture Wellness Clinic requesting waiver use approval to operate a massage establishment at 333005M, Suite 105, located on the northeast corner of 5 Mile and Farmington Roads in the southwest quarter of Section 15. Mr. Toramina?
Yes, I don't see...
She's walking up.
Oh, is she? I'm going to let her, I will let her describe this.
Okay, sure.
This is a, the expansion of an existing acupuncture business located at Civic Center Office Plaza directly across the street from us. She's been in operation there a number of years. She wants to expand that use to include massage therapy, and she can describe it.
And you're Ruth?
Yes. Good evening, thank you.
Good evening.
My name is Ruth Lehman, and I am a doctor of acupuncture and Chinese medicine, as well as a licensed acupuncturist here in the state of Michigan. Very happy to be here tonight. I'm actually a new business. I just opened in August, and so I worked for Henry Ford Health System, and my patients were able to receive a complement of services at the same location, chiropractic, massage, and acupuncture. So I went into opening my own practice and chose Livonia. I've been very happy to be here, but, and I didn't realize that this massage thing was going to be a thing until I went to get my business, and they said not massage, right? And so I became aware of the fact that I would need a waiver, and at first, I wasn't initially planning on adding massage services, but my patients are really, you know, disappointed that I don't offer that additionally. Massage and acupuncture actually work synergistically. They can really increase the therapeutic results, and so my patients are used to a full complement of services, and I used to concierge that for them at Henry Ford Health System, and now I want to do it here in Livonia at my own clinic, alleviate acupuncture.
Great, okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anything to add, Mr. Toramina? No? Anyone from the council wishing to make comment? No? Yes, Councilman Morgan?
That sounds great. We welcome new businesses. I'll offer an approving for consent.
Thank you.
Thank you, okay. Yeah, Councilman Barr?
No objection. I just want to acknowledge that, you know, anytime we get these types of proposals, they get a little bit of extra attention.
Yeah.
And this one was no exception for me, but in reviewing the planning commission minutes, and I feel like they handled this very thoroughly. I totally support what Mr. Morgan said, but I just think it's worth acknowledging that there are things to look into with things like this.
Yes.
And I too am comfortable with it and glad to see that on consent agenda, so, thanks.
Great, great. Anyone else? No? Okay. Anyone from the audience before you leave? Okay. Don't see anyone? You have an approving on consent, was that correct, Mr. Morgan, or Councilman Morgan, and has offered that? So welcome to Livonia. You don't have to come back, doctor. You can...
Thank you.
Massage away.
Thank you.
And acupuncture away, okay?
Yeah.
All right, super. Well, thank you.
Thank you and good evening.
Yes, thank you. Okay. Item four, then, council's request to approve approval of the final budget adjustments for fiscal year ending November 30th of '22, brought to us from the Department of Finance. Good evening.
Good evening, council. My name is Connie Campola. I am the chief accountant for the city of Livonia, and I am standing in this evening for Michael Slater, our finance director. We are asking council to approve our final budget adjustments in order to be able to close our books for fiscal year 2022 and being in compliance with the State of Michigan Budget Act. We have included in your packet the list of budget adjustments that we are asking, but I am prepared this evening to give you some highlights on those adjustments. Really, there are three primary reasons why we are asking for these. The first are final funding adjustments in order to align the funding for the Ben Salani projects. We are asking for adjustments to the fire department. There was, from the police department, the police department had an excess of funding this year due to unfilled positions, while the fire department unfortunately had an excess of costs associated with workers' comp, a large number of workers' compensation claims. And those claims, as you know, are not only expensive, but they also require backfilling for some of these positions for folks who are off and which, some of them are temporary upgrades, which cost more money, and also overtime associated with having to backfill those positions. And then our final budget adjustment that we're requesting is related to our benefits control department, and that's simply due to a large or an increase in our experience claims this year. And with that, I'll answer any questions.
Great. Well, nice to see you, Connie.
Nice to see you.
Thank you for all you do. Council, any, anything for Connie tonight? All right, I went to Bentley, so it's hard to add and subtract. Councilwoman McIntyre?
Thank you, Connie. Very nice presentation and summary. I'd like to offer an approving on consent.
Great. Councilwoman McIntyre, as you just heard, has offered an approving on consent, meaning you don't have to come back. You can consent later next time, and there you got it. Anybody else? No? Anyone from the audience? Seeing and hearing none, you have an approving on consent.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for coming in.
Yep.
All right. Item five is a word of bid from the Livonia Public Library Strategic Plan Consultant for the Livonia Public Library. This is brought to us from Budget Fund. Hello.
Hello. Good evening, Madam Vice President and everyone else. I am here to request funding and to request approval to hire Library IQ to facilitate the strategic planning process for the Livonia Public Library. We went through five different companies. We rated them and got it down to two. We interviewed two of the companies and decided that Library IQ was our favorite.
Great, great. Council, questions, comments, direction? Yes, go right ahead.
Thank you, Vice President. Just a quick question through the chair to Tony. Do you, have you identified any, what kind of a group is going to be part of the steering committee on this, on the strategic plan?
Yes. It's going to be the new director, because we're going to start this after I leave. I think a couple people from the library commission, and then some people from the I think a couple people from the library commission, and then some people from the library itself, and probably some people from the community as well.
If it's possible, I don't know if it's, if it's there, just to put it in there, but I'm sure some of my council colleagues maybe have a couple of us on it, or at least to offer that, to sit in it would be awesome.
Sure.
Other than that, everything looks in order. Exciting to be jumping into this. I'd be happy to offer an approving for consent.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Anyone from the audience? Tony, you have an approving on consent, as you can see, and thank you for all your years of service. Really appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
Certainly. I'm sure we'll see you again. Just, never hurts to thank people. Thanks. Okay, council, we are on item six. Request for approval to offer free teen memberships at the Jackie Cursey Recreation Center. Department of Parks and Rec has brought this to us for Livonia teens between the ages of fourteen and seventeen as a pilot program for summer of twenty-three from June fifteenth of this year through September fourth of this year. Mr. Davis?
Thank you, Vice President Toy. Ted Davis, representing Parks and Recreation. We're asking that council agree or concur with the Parks and Recreation Commission on offering Livonia youth ages fourteen through seventeen a free summer membership to the rec center. We, like a lot of you here, we don't do enough for teens. And that's a drumbeat that we've consistently heard. We've, we've asked ourselves what we can do. We had some private businesses in our area and other areas do a very similar program last year. And although we weren't ready for it last year, we are ready for it this year. And with your approval, we'd like to offer this as a, as a one-year, as a one-summer option, and then see how it goes. Summer, you know, for us at the rec center is usually a slower time. We have some excess capacity. We feel this is a good opportunity, and our hope, obviously, is that we offer a great product to teens in this community and that they want to stay and become members. For us, this is not a significant cost factor and lost revenue, and we feel we would actually make this up over the course of a year. So I'm happy to answer any questions council might have on this item.
Certainly. Councilwoman McIntyre?
Ted, I really like the innovative thinking here. I, I'll tell you what the concern is, and you probably know where this is gonna go. We've had issues in the past with teens.
Sure.
Not exclusive to teens, but we've, we've had a lot of, we've had a number of problems with teens. When they, and most teens are great, right? We're not concerned about the ninety-five percent who are great and want to come to the rec center and use the facilities. But there are teens who will not have an interest in using the facilities. There'll be a place to hang out. You know, this isn't unique to the rec center. We see it in schools, right? There's, there's, you know, and I, I sound like the old lady get off my lawn, but there, there clearly is a difference in respect for authority. And, you know, I've talked to you in the past about concerns at the rec center. We don't always have the staff to monitor the behavioral issues, and I understand the, they'll have to comply with the code of conduct. But a group of five teens is no match for a rec center hourly employee.
Councilwoman McIntyre, if I could.
And, and, and I, and again, I really like this.
Yeah.
I really like this program, but I'm concerned about the possibility of turning off families and adult members who do pay the freight, if you will.
So I remember very well, when I started seven-plus years ago, that the rec center was not a place to go on Friday nights, that everyone stayed away. And we made a very concerted strategic effort, and we changed some rules. One of them being that you had to be fourteen and over as, as a member to be there alone, or as a non-member to be there alone. And shockingly enough, that solved a great many of our problems. That difference between twelve and fourteen really solved a number of our issues. And, and that was why we are sticking with this fourteen through seventeen because of our experiences with that. I also do believe we will see an increase in issues because we are offering this service to more people. But I also will say, we've had more issues in the last three months at the rec center with seniors than we have with youth. And it's not even close, unfortunately. So there's a part of me that says we're all children, just in various sizes, quite honestly. And these children will either abide by our rules, or they will not. And if they don't, they will be, unfortunately, they will deprive themselves of a great opportunity. I tend to think kids that are busy, that are active and that are engaged are going to be less of an issue than kids that are bored and not active and not engaged. And we are certainly, not without risk, willing to give this a try. And I, Councilwoman McIntyre, I agree, there is a risk here. But we are to a point, I feel like, and our staff feels like, we're to a point where we've, we're back to fully staffed. With the exception, excuse me, if I knew I was gonna talk so much, I would have brought up water. Where, you know, the only exception we really have is lifeguarding at this point, where we're still dealing with that shortage. But everywhere else, we feel we are sufficiently staffed. Excuse me.
Go right ahead, sure.
I'm, I would be comfortable.
I'm sorry.
No, that's quite all right.
Thank you.
We'll give you a chance.
It's okay. I don't want your energy drink, I'm afraid. You got too much.
Well, Susan is getting you some water. I, I would, I would be willing to approve this, but I would like a report out a month into the program. And I don't know, I don't, and I don't want to make extra work, administrative work for you guys. I don't know if you keep, how you keep tallies of incidents, or, you know, do you, do you keep records of?
We do keep records of incidents, unfortunately. I wish it was so few that we didn't have to.
I know.
But we do keep records of incidents. We typically do a monthly report with, you know, the person, or not even the person, but the incident and the discipline that was taken. And, and we present that to our commission every single month, so it would be no issue for me to provide that to council as an informational item.
You know, like a month in, to, to come and tell us how it's going and how many members there are. And, and I'd also like to ask that council have an opportunity, and I'm sorry to say this. We are temporarily no longer members of the rec center, but if you could maybe set up some opportunities for council to pop over, right? Like, you know, during a weekday in the afternoon?
Council never needs an excuse to pop over. You're always welcome.
Well, you know, you don't want to go in like, you know, don't you know who I am? Let me in.
Your pictures are all up. They know who you are.
Well, usually, usually when I say that, it has, it has the.
Educating our staff. That's, that's all it is. But yes, we could absolutely set up a time where council can come over and.
Yeah, I, I, because I'd like to see, I'd like to see how it's going, and with an understanding, and I don't know if we need to codify this, but with an understanding that if it turns out in the first month that there were problems, you know, opportunity to recalibrate the membership program. I, I would certainly hope we wouldn't have to stop it, but an evaluation, if we could maybe add something into the, to the item that council will get an update a month into this as a checkpoint to see how it's going. I, I'd be happy to offer this on the consent with that additional. Are we able to add something like that to it, Mr. Neville?
Well, I guess if it's agreeable to all of council, I mean, I think there would have to be something you'd vote on or.
Yeah.
Have discussion, but.
Yeah, but, but I'd like to, I'd like to add that, and then I'd like to have it on the regular, on the regular.
No problem. Yes, who was next? Morgan, then Rob's going, and then you can go, your honor. Go right ahead, Councilwoman Morgan.
Ted, the, you know, being a policeman for so many years, it seems to me that this is not necessarily the appropriate move to make for the rec center. And the reason I say that is because the, what I've seen in the past is that the parents will use this as a place to drop their kids off throughout the summer, where they're, while they're working, the kids have no place to get, no way to get home. It turns into a gathering place for kids in groups, and then the people that are there to work out, or whatever they may be doing there, the, the citizens that are paying, have issues with these children, and we have no place to put them. I remember being called there multiple times throughout the years. We have a group of kids that they're gathering at the rec center, wherever it may be, and they're just not doing anything. They're just hanging out there together, and it's a gathering place. And normally, I think that would be a great thing, but not at a place where people pay money to come and work out and play basketball and do other things. If, if they're there to do that, and we're going to give that fourteen to seventeen, allow them in there for free, it's kind of, it, it doesn't balance out. And I, I would be, as Councilwoman McIntyre had indicated, that she wanted to see a report. I would like to see how many police reports, or police runs, not reports, runs, that we had to respond to at the rec center between these times. What is it you're proposing between, is it?
Eight and eight?
June fifteenth.
And September?
Yeah, and September fourth.
I would like to see how, see, so we can at least look at, and I know you're saying that the, the rec center takes reports, but they don't have the police runs that we have to show up, whether they're out in the parking lot, whether out at the splash pad, whether at the pool, you know, in the workout area, or wherever they may be gathering. And I think that's, it, it's something that, at this point, I'm not saying I couldn't be swayed, but this is not something that I'd really be in favor for, for at this point. This just doesn't make sense for the people who actually pay to come in there and, you know, for their, their position to be on the treadmill or whatnot, and have to deal with the children that people drop off.
If I may.
Thank you, Councilwoman Morgan. I'm gonna go to Councilman.
Okay.
Madam Vice President, is it okay with you if Mr. Davis wants to kind of, I think you had some remarks, maybe?
I just wanted to say, I, I'm not, nor is my staff going into this with a Pollyanna-ish view of the world or teens of today. I have, I've had four of them. I've survived. I'm not sure the fifth one I will, but I have survived so far with the first four. I, I do anticipate we will see an increase of issues, and we would see that, we always see that when we introduce large numbers of new members. I would also say that we are well-versed in handling this. Now, that doesn't mean we won't have increased police runs. That doesn't mean we won't have increased incidents. But I would say that the ninety-five percent, as, as Councilwoman McIntyre pointed out, will abide by the rules and will be appreciative of this, and to not let the five percent sway. Loitering is, is against the house rules at the rec center. That's, it's a house rule violation. We will deal with that internally. Do I anticipate that happening? Of course. Do we think this is going to be? And also, part of the thing is, the parents have to bring them in to sign them up. So there is some acknowledgement, at least from the parents' end. You can't come in because you're a minor and just sign yourself up. We are requiring that parents come in. So we do feel there's, maybe not monetarily skinning the game, but there is some acknowledgement of our rules and expectations that we have. And we will make that very clear to, to the teens if this is approved by council, so, I'm sorry, I just wanted to.
No, that's fine. That's fine. I bet you that senior citizen was loitering, though. Go ahead, Rob.
Thank you, Madam Vice President. Thank you, Mr. Davis, for being here tonight. I do appreciate you and your staff trying to be creative and get membership. I, I do appreciate that marketing mentality. But I also appreciate and understand my colleagues' concerns, because we will be the ones fielding phone calls, like you and your staff, but we will be the ones fielding phone calls from customers that are paying. So I understand both, both thought processes here. A few of the questions I had. Will the rec center still, and I think you've kind of already alluded to it, so the rec center will still make the youth and their parents come in through the traditional membership program, signing them up, getting all their information, identifying the youth, identifying the parents? Only difference is there will not be a monetary price to it.
Correct.
Okay. Do you have a target number for the youth? I mean, are you hoping to get fifty children to come, or a hundred or two hundred? I mean, is there a number, a goal in mind?
So it's, it's difficult to say. We estimate there are about twenty-four hundred Livonia residents in this age bracket, based upon two thousand twenty census data. You know, if, if we, if we got five hundred, I mean, that would be, that, that less, that's a little more than twenty percent. That would be outstanding for us. And again, I think a huge outreach into the community, right? I mean, that's what we're, we're really looking for, but five hundred would be an amazing number for us. And remember, five hundred are gonna be spread out over days and weeks and months, and some will be regular users, and some will utilize the rec center, and some will utilize the outdoor pools that are in their neighborhoods. It would be spread out over time, so, and over facilities. So we certainly don't think it's, we're gonna be five hundred all at one time, all at the rec center.
With that being said, is this only offered to Livonia residents that are youth, or just?
It is. This is only Livonia residents, only those fourteen to seventeen years old.
Okay, and have you and your commissioner, your staff, have you explored options as opposed to a free membership, maybe a, a reduced membership?
We have not, and why, we think that certainly could be an option. Again, we had a lot of private businesses do this last year. We thought it was a great idea, quite honestly, and a brilliant marketing campaign, honestly. Not to be so blunt about it, but I think this is, you know, we could certainly offer this for a dollar or some very low cost, but nothing attracts attention like free. And again, for a very, for a finite period, right? We're talking about during their summer break, when kids need things to do, that we're stepping up and offering a service, so.
And last question, procedurally, this would only be for the one year of council to approve it, and let's just say it doesn't go well, and you come back before us next year.
We will not come back before you to renew this if it doesn't go well.
Great. All right, thank you, Madam Vice President. Appreciate your time.
Thank you. Councilwoman McCullough, and then Councilman.
Thank you, Vice President. Through the chair to Mr. Davis, if I may. I, I like this idea. I think it's great. There's a, there's a movie, it, to me, it's a, it's an old movie that I really enjoy. It's called Over the Edge. If you've seen it, you know it.
I don't know. I don't know that movie.
It's a bunch of teenage kids that rebel, and I feel like I'm standing before here, making a decision on that. But no, I, I think the idea is great. I think it's great marketing. Do I think you'll have some problems? Absolutely. Anytime you do an innovative or trailblazing idea, you're gonna have to have some after action, some procedures put in place. My question, I, you did answer, you touched base on it, with staffing being full. You're at the rec center, is that correct?
Yes, it is.
The issue that I had is, is obviously, the only issue that I have, is that recently, I know we're not doing party rentals, and there are some amenities at the rec center that are currently not back since COVID. Do you, for specifically party rentals, do you have any anticipation? Because that's, that's a huge revenue generating source.
Actually, party rentals typically are a money loser for us, and when we factor in the facility costs, staff charges, that's why we have been very hesitant.
Okay.
Party rentals are staff-intensive for us. And for us to bring party rentals to where it would be break even or dare even say come out ahead, we would probably need to start with double, doubling our costs right now. And we have been hesitant to do so. So we have been thinking of ways to offer rentals at a lower price point. And this really has been a, a five-year journey for us. We used to, if you remember, we used to supply paper materials for them. We used to do pizza. It was a very full-service exercise.
Yeah.
And we have scaled that back to now where it is basically a room, but we are still, because of check-in and everything else, and, and the, and really, it's, it's, quite honestly, it's, it's not our members that are driving the, the labor intensiveness of it. It's the non-members that are, it's, it's people that aren't familiar with our facility or our procedures. And it's all at one time, right? It's, you're bringing in thirty people all at one time, and it's very difficult. That's why we haven't gone back to parties yet, is we have not figured out a way to streamline this process to make it less labor-intensive and to make it, in fact, to make it affordable.
Okay. No, that, that's, that's surprising from my vantage point, just for the fact that, I know that specifically, I've had times where, you know, I'm looking basically to give, you know, a place for specifically a hockey team, where we would literally just want a room and, you know, obviously, maybe go play in the Mac Gym. Besides the point, that's off-topic. One thing I will say in the defense of the rec center is to my colleagues that their disciplinary process is legit. I know that because I play ball hockey there, and it is a, it, it is, it is a very strict environment, and they do take care of issues with suspensions and formal complaints and process, so that's appreciative.
We did rectify that situation.
Yes. Yes. No, it wasn't me, just for the record.
You're right. Councilmember.
Ted, one thing that I'm not totally clear on, does this affect annual family memberships?
It could.
So how?
So.
So I, I'm just, just use a real example. I've got three teenagers on our, you know, so how does that affect? Two in this age group.
So how many people are in, in your family membership?
Six.
Six. Okay, so we take three off. You're still a family.
So, but I guess what I'm saying, though, is families, I'm not saying this out of self-interest. I'm just trying to understand how the program works. So, so family memberships will be extended by a certain program? No.
No, they will not. So we would downgrade you to the next classification if applicable.
I, I see. Okay.
So if you have four people in your family, and one of them is a teenager, right, in your rec center membership, we take one off, it's still three people, it's still family. There's, you're still paying for a family membership.
Got it.
But if you were at three, and then it takes you to two, you'd play, pay then for those, for that period of time, for those three months, you'd pay for an adult plus one.
I got you. That helps me make sense of some of these numbers a little bit better. Next question. What, so our, our current membership at the rec, I saw a number in there, thirteen thousand seven hundred something. Is that what that was?
Yeah, that's, I mean, having looked at it today, but yeah, we're in that ballpark.
And how does that compare historically to what our, like, pre-COVID?
Pre-COVID, we're, we were, we had some issues pre-COVID, if you remember. We had a leisure pool issue. We were down below thirteen thousand members when COVID hit.
So over the course of the history of the rec center, are our numbers average, higher than average?
I'd say we're, I mean, I always heard the number fifteen thousand. I don't think that's realistic with the number of options that there currently are available to people.
That was early on, I think.
Yeah, I think, I think we're in a good spot. I would say we're average or slightly better.
So I guess my question is, and, and maybe this has been in what you've said, and I, I've certainly heard a few reasons, but overall, like, why, why now? Why now in twenty, the rec center's been there for twenty-some years. You said you've talked about this. What is, what are you trying to accomplish? What's the urgency to? You said if we had five hundred, that'd be an amazing success. What are you, what's the purpose?
I'm trying to introduce as many people to the rec center as I possibly can. And just because thirteen seven, I think, is a, is an average number, or a good number, or better-than-average number, it doesn't mean I'm content. It doesn't mean we should be satisfied. It doesn't mean that we've hit mission accomplished or that everyone knows about us, because certainly they don't. And, and also, I think there are also barriers to participation, right? And money being one of them for some people. And certainly, if we can provide an opportunity for, for a segment of Livonia youth to utilize that facility in a time of vacation for them, with that opportunity to, to have that access, to have that amenity available to them, to remove a barrier, that, that certainly would be a blessing for us, to be able to do that.
That's certainly noble. I will say, and you've heard me say this before, I've said this in these meetings before, as, as a family member there, I am frequently frustrated with our inability to use that, to use the rec center, because it is so, I mean, in one sense, maybe this is success, but it is so overrun with people. Like, when we go there, we hardly ever can do what we want to do as a family, because there's simply not room. And so to, to be talking about doing this, I, I've got concerns about it. Not to mention the fact that, again, everything you just said is very noble. And I could understand maybe wanting to offer some deals here and there. But I, yeah, free attracts people, but free doesn't usually attract good things. And I, I, was this, Councilwoman McIntyre, you'd originally offered this for consent. Was it ultimately put on regular?
Yeah, I'm not comfortable with it on consent.
Okay. So those are just some of my thoughts on it. I, I, I'm not dead set on how I'm gonna vote on this, but I'm definitely not comfortable with it being a consent. So, thanks.
So that's going on regular, then? Anyone else as well? No, I just wanna go back in time a little bit, you know, when I'm a little older. So what happened many years back was we used to have sock hops. And we, I don't know if the city joined in with, with the schools or not, but LPS used to sponsor those for, for young people to go. And as you've kind of mentioned, there was nowhere to, you know, you kind of hang out. And Fernum Finster, who used to be on this council and was president of this council, said, "Kids that play sports don't end up in courts." He used to have bumper stickers that he handed out as a councilperson. Any of you that remember that, or probably don't remember that? But I also wanted to ask you, as you proposed this proposal, what time would this be offered, Ted? Would this be daytime, evening strictly, or was there?
Anytime the facilities are open.
Open. Okay, okay. Thank you. Councilwoman McIntyre, and then Councilmember.
Sorry, I just momentarily lost my thought. Well, to, to Councilman Barr's point about free things, Ted, what would the, and I just remembered the other question. What, and, and we've, I've experienced this with other things, right? When you give something away free, it tends not to have a very, tends not to have a high perceived value. What if, you know, what if you, what if it were twenty-five dollars? I, I like the idea. I really like the idea and the thinking here. But I also like the idea that people have some skin in the game. And, you know, if, if a family comes in and says, "We've got four teens. We'd like to put them in this." Twenty-five dollars is cost prohibitive. You indicated that there was money from Healthy Livonia Scholarship.
Potentially, yes.
Yeah, I, I wouldn't have any problem, right, with, if a family says, "This is a financial hardship for us," right, to come up with a hundred bucks or whatever. But I do like the idea of having some fee here. And then back to this practical issue, which Councilman Barr raised. So if I have a, if I have a family membership, and I put my kids in this free, and then, so for three months, the cost of my membership decreases? How does, how does that work administratively without a lot of hassle? Because, because people are billed annually.
Well, people are billed annually or billed monthly.
But if you're billed, I mean, monthly, you just turn it off.
If you're billed annually, I mean, we know the, obviously, we know the duration of this. We know what the cost of the next step down is for three months. I mean, we would just credit that to the account.
Got it.
Council, Councilman, your thinking?
Thanks, Vice President. The, the one question I do have, you know, as we're really, and, and I, I think if we go any further, this might even be better to go into a committee just for further discussion. But I did want to bring up one last question. And some of my colleagues are bringing up great points about, you know, free, there's really, there's, there's no detriment or incentive that's, you know, hey, I'm just gonna sign up. I've got five hundred passes, and I agree, I mean, for the marketing component. And then I just realized that we have Livonia Service Corps that is trying to get off the ground again. I mean, have you guys thought about trying to pair this with an incentive of joining the service corps, throwing in a few hours in return to then getting an application for a free membership for three months? At least there's an incentive, and there's.
I have not. We have not.
I don't know. I just think if, if you offer something for free, you know, you might get some bad actors. It is what it is. I think it's a great initiative. But if there is, you know, if we're trying to build Livonia Service Corps, and we've got a ton of service, service groups, we have thirty-six square miles, it might not be a bad idea to, to, to provide an incentive in return for a membership. I know that swim clubs, they offer worker bee, you know, deposits that you have to work, you know, half a day to get, you know, a hundred bucks back. It might be a good idea. Might be just a thought, just throwing it out there. I know this is on the regular. I know there's more discussion, but just my two cents.
So you weren't offering that for a study, or for a committee or anything, were you?
Not, not yet. We're, this is on the regular, so we've got a couple more weeks.
Okay. Anyone else from the council? Anyone from the audience? Yes, good evening.
Good evening. Margaret Earl, three one five four five Pembroke, Livonia. When we're considering this, there's been a lot of questions, and the responses have sounded like they're kind of off the cuff. And I would like, as a resident, someone who has, not currently, but has been involved in this center, I would like to see written exactly what this proposal is. I've worked in the Detroit Public Schools. We have done different kinds of programs. And I know that supervision is always important. So some of the questions that I had were, I would like to see an application. What will be the application process? And also, I'd like to see a handbook of what participating in this activity entails. I also had written down the, the idea of volunteering in activity to have use of this program. So that would be something in the handbook. I think there's a great need for children at this age to have responsibility. And this would be an opportunity to set that in motion so that if they're going to use the rec center, that possibly they'd be available out in the parks during certain hours to help with organized games for children that are younger than them. But again, this requires some supervision and planning. I'm wondering about the parent sign-off for liability purposes. I think that having designated hours when they can be in would prevent them from being dropped off in the morning and staying there until night. That's not the purpose of your program. That's not how most people use the center. They usually kind of have a designated amount of time that they're gonna be there and participating in what's available. I think that I would like to see a little bit more about the organization and the implementation of it, the designated hours and the volunteer-to-participate program. I think that would really give the kids the idea of ownership and a sense of responsibility. And I'm just gonna say, and I'm just gonna throw this out there, at one time on Friday nights, we did go to the rec center. And we did find out that the family changing rooms were being used for source, for resources other than just families going in to change clothes. And I'm just gonna put that out there. I don't want to be responsible for any new babies. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else from the audience? Anyone from the council before we leave this? I think we have this on regular as well. Okay. If there's no others, Mr. Davis, thank you. We will move on. Okay. Item seven is a request for authorization to waive the sealed bid process and purchase from sole source provider. Department of Parks and Rec has brought this to us to purchase a precast restroom building for Ben Salini Play Area from budget funds. Mr. Davis?
Thank you, Vice President Toy. Again, Ted Davis representing Parks Recreation. We're asking council to approve a sole source purchase from Quality Precast Incorporated in the amount of seventy-five thousand five hundred dollars. Sufficient funds are budgeted in our capital outlay account, and we request that council waive the formal bidding process in accordance with provisions set forth in section three point zero four point one four zero point E, point three of Livonia Code ordinances. I'm happy to answer any questions council might have on this item.
Certainly. Thank you. Council? Yes. Go right ahead. Councilmember.
Thank you, Madam Vice President. Thank you, Mr. Davis. Question, is it, was it just cheaper to, to have a precast restroom as opposed to just building a new one? Do you like traditional means?
Cheaper and faster.
Thank you, Madam Vice President.
Go right ahead.
Through the chair to Mr. Davis. I've been getting a lot of resident comments, just wanting to ask a general question. I know a lot of the parks have porta potty rentals. What was particular about putting a permanent solution here rather than some of the other parks across the city? Just curious.
That was part of our park plan that we actually developed last year, or a couple of years ago, for Ben Chilani. Traffic is a big, is a big determinant on where you put permanent restrooms as opposed to portable restrooms. This certainly is going to be a well-used area, and it already is, actually, as is Rotary, as is the rest of Bicentennial, as is Ford Field, as is Clement Circle, which has permanent restrooms as well. That's where we try to focus in, on, on usage patterns and where we get the highest usage. We would love to add more permanent restrooms across the park system.
And this, I, I mean, just, I, I'm making an assumption here, but I think I'm correct, that if we had a design build, even if this facility was stick-built, it's gonna be over this cost. This, this precast system, I, I'm assuming is, with the current market, is substantially cheaper.
Again, this is a handicap, it's an ADA compliant, two stall, or two restroom facility. It would cost us, I could imagine, easily double if we were to not go on a precast route. We anticipate with placement to be under a hundred thousand dollars right now.
Very cool. Thank you.
Certainly. Councilman Morgan?
Yes, Ted. I was wondering, how many restroom facilities do we have in there, in that area there? Do, is it just one right in front of the fire department, or is there another one that?
That is the only one at the, at Bicentennial Park. You do have the golf course as well.
There's a, there's a fixed one on the, on the golf course, you mean, or is it?
There is a fixed one on the golf course, and they're actually in the, in the pro shop as well.
Okay. I meant kind of out for the park.
Then just the one across from the fire station.
Is that ever in use? Is that pretty much open all the time?
It's not open all the time. It's open when we have rentals out there. We have staff out in our facilities. We are still struggling with opening restrooms all the time. I'd like to get us to that point, but it's locking and it's oversight of those, those facilities.
And, and this facility right here, is this, where in the park would this be actually placed at, would be?
So this would be immediately north of, in between the two parking lots, immediately north. There's an actual open area right there for you to go out there, and you can see the sewer line is already sticking out of the ground.
Oh, okay. And also, does this, is this like vandalism-resistant type of material? That if it gets spray painted, or somebody tries to destroy some stuff, it can be easily or reasonably removed?
Reasonably, yes.
Well, thank you.
You're welcome.
Councilman Danovic?
Thank you, Madam Vice President. Mr. Davis, I forgot to ask, is there hours of operation on this?
We don't have set hours of operation, but we would anticipate this being open as we have staff on, on site, which is gonna be most afternoons and evenings and weekends throughout the, the summer months.
So you're, you're, are you saying you do your best to lock it up before night, so people can't use it at night, or?
Yes.
Okay. And then to Mr. Councilmember Morgan's question, if somebody takes a, you know, unfortunately vandalizes it, destroys it, you know, takes a sledgehammer to it, is it difficult to replace an item? Whereas if it was just a brick structure, you could just replace a few of the bricks?
It would be the same as any other structure. We'd have to go in and assess damage and then replace components as needed.
I'd like to offer an approving on consent, if there's objection from my colleagues.
Thank you, Councilman. We have an approving on consent. Is there any other comments from the council? We went to the audience once. Mr. Davis, you're all set?
Thank you very much.
Yes, certainly. Okay. We're going to go to item nine, then, council? No, item eight, excuse me. Request permission from Wayne County to close a portion of Farmington Road to host Livonia's annual Memorial Day ceremony. This is brought to us by Parks and Recreation Department to close Farmington Road North and southbound from Five Mile to Roycroft on Saturday, May twenty-seventh, from eight-thirty a.m. to ten a.m. Mr. Davis?
Perfectly said, Vice President Toy. We're asking for permission to go to Wayne County and ask for the road closure.
Madam Chair.
Yes, please.
Offer this for consent, if there's objection, approving.
Great. Councilman Barr is offered approving, as you just heard, on consent. Any other comments from the council? Anyone from the audience? Mr. Davis, you have an approving on consent. You don't have to come back on that one. Okay. Item nine is a request to approve an intergovernmental agreement between Charter County of Wayne and City of Livonia from our Parks and Rec Department for improvements at Mees Park and Ben Salini Play Area from budget funds. Mr. Davis?
Thank you, Vice President Toy. We're asking that council approve an IGA with Wayne County for grants of ninety-six thousand one hundred and seventy-nine dollars and sixty-six thousand six hundred and twenty-four dollars to be used towards Ben Chilani Park Pavilion and Mees Park Playground Replacement. Mees Park, Ben Chilani, again, we're finalizing our plan there to, to do this. So this would be the last component we would add in that, in that space with the restroom and now the pavilion. Mees Park, Mees was slated for this year. We had a budget request in to replace the playground equipment that was cut. And we are looking to obviously add that back in with this IGA. I'm happy to answer any questions council might have on this.
Madam Chair.
Yes, please. Councilmember.
There's some of those grants we were talking about. Good job, Ted.
Thank you.
Offer this for approving for consent, if there's no objection.
Great. Councilmember Barr is offered, as you heard, approving on consent. Is there any others? See none, anyone from the audience? See no one? You have an approving on consent.
Thank you very much.
Item ten is an award of bid from our Department of Item 10 is an award of bid from our Department of Parks and Recreation for painting and wood replacement of Alexander Blue House, North Side at Greenmead Historical Park from budget funds. Mr. Davis.
Thank you very much, Vice President Toy. We actually are asking council for funds to replace wood at the Alexander Blue House on the north side of the facility. This was submitted for bids on mittens. The bids came back much higher. We're asking council to accept the quote we received from Cornerstone Painting for painting and carpentry work in the amount of $22,974. I'm happy to answer any questions council might have on this item.
Madam Vice President.
Go right ahead.
I'd like to offer an approving on consent if there's objection from my colleagues.
Great. Thank you. Okay. Anybody else wishing to speak to this? Hearing and seeing none, anyone from the audience? You have an approving on consent? Thank you, Mr. Davis.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Item 11 is a request to adopt a resolution proclaiming Friday, April 28th of this year, is Ann Arbor date in the city of Livonia. This is brought to us by Mr. Moore, Assistant Director of Public Works, to celebrate the celebration at 2:30. I should let you say this. Go ahead. I'm going to let you say it. I'm stealing your thunder. Go ahead.
Evening, council. Doug Moore with the Department of Public Works. This is our annual request for the Arbor Day commemoration program. It's going to be at Cleveland Elementary School this year. The time is not etched in stone. We have, we've had preliminary discussions with the principal, but we don't have the time. It'll be in the afternoon at some point.
Great. Council direction, comments?
Council Vice President?
Councilman Morgan.
Yeah, I'd like to offer approving for consent.
Councilman Morgan, you've heard, has offered approving on consent. Any others? Any other comments? Anyone from the audience? You have an approving on consent.
Thank you.
Yes, you're welcome. Item 12, council, is a request for authorization to waive the sealed bid process and purchase two 2023 Ford F-550s, regular cab, four-by-four pickup trucks to be uplifted, outfitted, excuse me, as a small dump trucks through the state of Michigan and Macomb County bid process. Brought to us by the Public Works Division for the use of the Roads Department from budget funds. Go right ahead, Mr. Moore.
Counsel, these were approved in the 2023 departmental capital budget. The trucks, the chassis are being purchased through state bid from Lung Hammer Ford in Owasso for $65,325 each, or a total of $130,650 for the two truck chassis. The upfitting will be done by Truck and Trailer Specialties of Howell. That'll consist of the dump body, saw auger, spinner, plow, light package. The cost for the upfitting is $59,825 for each truck, or a total of $119,650. All told, the price for both trucks together is $250,300. This does include a $5,000 per vehicle or $10,000 total contingency fund to cover unforeseen issues that we've been running into lately with our large vehicle purchases.
Thank you very much. Counsel, your pleasure.
Madam Chair.
Yes, please. Councilmember.
Offer this for approving for consent. There's no objection.
Anyone else on council? No? Anyone from the audience? Hearing and seeing no one, you have an approving on consent. Item 14 is a request for additional appropriation, brought to us by the Department of Public Works. I'm going to let you go right ahead, Mr. Moore.
Okay. This will be a flatbed truck. The chassis itself will be purchased, it's being purchased on state bid again through Lung Hammer Ford for $65,325. The upfitting is being done through Truck and Trailer Specialties. That will consist of a flatbed body, plow, light package, storage cabinets, lift crane. The cost for upfitting is $56,346. All told, the total price is $126,671. This also includes a $5,000 contingency for unforeseen issues.
Thank you. Councilman, any comments or direction?
I'll offer an approving for consent.
Councilman has offered approving for consent. Any others? Seeing and hearing no one, anyone from the audience? No one from the audience? You have an approving on consent.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Item 15 is to approve Alliance of Rouge Communities ARC Annual Assessment, brought to us from the Department of Public Works in the amount of $36,504 from budget funds.
We missed 14.
Did we?
Yeah. Sorry.
I was looking at 14, not listening to her. Sorry.
Okay, let's go back to 14 then. Can we rewind here?
Yes.
Okay. Department of Public Works for surcharge of two Freightliner 108 SD trucks in the amount of $13,400 due to the manufacturer price increase from budget funds. Go right ahead, Mr. Moore.
So council, these two vehicles were approved in 2021. They were ordered. We actually have one of them sitting in our road maintenance barn and have been using it. Unfortunately, we were back in August for an increase in the back end of it, which was the dump body and everything else. When the invoice came for the chassis on these two trucks, we were hit with a $6,700 cost overrun on each of the bodies. So we've got to cover that. That was the reason for the two $5,000 charges in the two previous items, so that we hopefully don't have to come back with this issue again.
Madam President.
Please, go right ahead.
Thank you, Madam Vice President. Mr. Moore, thanks for being here this evening. Procedurally, when you go out for bid, is there a way to put in the bid that they can't come back for a surcharge later on? Or that's not how that works in reality, in your industry?
In reality, no. These trucks were ordered almost two years ago, and because of the way the process works, there's such a long lead time when they're built, when they go in for order, when they get built, when they come out of the manufacturer, and then when they go out for the upfitting, there isn't really a way to see these charges until almost at the end when they hit us with them.
Understood. Realities of the industry. I'd like to offer an approving on consent if there's objection from my colleagues.
Thank you. Anyone?
One question.
Go right ahead.
And you may have just answered it, Doug. I'm just trying to process what you said, and I'm looking at the materials that was given us. I see it here, it says, the letter from Daimler Truck says that units with a scheduled build date honor before May 29th, 2022 are price protected and not impacted by this. You said we ordered these two years ago. It just took that long to build them?
Yes.
Okay. That was completely out of our control?
Yes. My personal experience is my previous life. I worked for Ford Land. We would order, the trucks are made in runs, and the runs are done weirdly and very quickly in a short period of time. The one-ton pickup trucks when I worked down there were done in March, April. We had to have our order in by December to get them, because if we missed it, then they were done. And it works the same way with the big trucks. We get slotted in for X number of trucks or chassis, and then the rest of it is done afterwards. We may or may not get that chassis. This year, we put in for two big dumps. We're getting one. The second one, we probably will not get because it's just not going to be available.
Okay. Thanks for explaining that. I don't have any objection to it being on consent.
Any others? Anyone from the audience? Hearing and seeing no one, approving on consent. 15, we'll go back to the request to approve Alliance of Rouge Communities.
These are our annual ARC dues for $36,504. The ARC, we're a member of the alliance. It's Rouge-wide. They're helping us with our MS4 permit, which we finally got. Probably going to be audited by the state because it's, the process is taking so long, and our new one is now due in three months. And they're also helping us with an erosion problem upstream of Idlewild Golf Course, planning and all that. So we, and they're doing all of our IDEP inspections for us now too, so our staff doesn't have to.
Great.
Madam Chair.
Certainly. Councilmember.
As Mr. Moore said, this is something we do annually. I'd be happy to offer approving for consent if there's no objection.
Thank you. Anyone else on council? Anyone from the audience? You have an approving on consent by Councilmember Barr.
Thank you, council.
You're welcome. Have a good evening.
You too. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Item 16, request to accept stormwater facilities maintenance agreement, Engineering Division. Go right ahead, Todd. You can explain all that.
Thank you, Madam Vice President.
Certainly.
And council members, obviously, this is just a housekeeping issue. Once the stormwater agreement was from Wayne County, we put together with the standard template we have for Livonia, have the stormwater agreement signed by the city council, then we sent it down to Wayne County for recording and executed. So we're just asking again for housekeeping issues now that everything's been addressed up to snuff and moving forward to have a recorded document on the future maintenance of that development called Dover Court off of Ann Arbor Trail.
Right. This is across Leosley Court subdivision then?
Yep.
Okay. In conjunction with that stormwater collection system. Okay, great. Council, direction, comments?
I'd like to offer an approving on consent if there's objection from my colleagues.
Great. Okay. Anyone else? We have, Danovic has offered a approving on consent. Any from the audience? We don't have much of an audience left, but that's okay. Alrighty. Item 17, award of contract, Engineering Division. Go right ahead.
Thank you, Madam President. As you know, with the blessing of the city residents, they approved that millage, renewed millage for another 10 years. This will be the first year of another 10 years of the millage to help improve our roads. We always have an asphalt program, a concrete program, and a selective slab program. With the asphalt program, typically they've been in between $3.8 and $4 million the last three or four years. Last year, we extended it because of the war in Ukraine and Russia. This year, we went out for bids. We had four people show up to pre-bid meeting. We only had one bidder though. It was Niggle at just over $5 million. So we had to make sure we fit the budget for the road repairs that we have. For this year, we have about a $9.6 million budget to fix our roads. So in effort to do that, we decided to eliminate, this time Victor Parkway, I'm sorry, Laura Park Drive from Six Mile to Laura Park Court. That's where the Holiday Inn is. We're hoping that maybe the two lots will be developed. My goal was eventually try to get those two lots developed and then fix the road. But with I-275 being under construction and with that incident with traffic going through there, we felt it'd be better to hold off. That's about a $90,000 fix. In addition, we held off on Pine Tree, which is adjacent to Wayne Road, which is going to be fixed this year also between Plymouth and Joy Road. So with those two, we thought it would be best to hold off. Again, we may have money. We'll see how it comes into play. Maybe we get Pine Tree done at the end of the year, but we'll hold off on definitely on Laura Park Drive. Last year, we were able to do a couple of streets, add it back in to make sure we got as many streets as we could get done with our tax dollars. So this year, we're negotiating with Niggle. They were able to coordinate with us. We're going to, again, move forward in the amount of $3,803,196 for the 23 program, including 22 streets. Regreed to 150 days. And we also are going to be moving four trees, unfortunately, to fix the portion south of Gil Road. But the breakdown is as follows. We have a reconstruction amount of $48,840. We have the rehabilitation portion of $3,687,960. And finally, the maintenance portion of $67,260, of which we, just over $3.8 million. So again, we're looking for your approval to award to Niggle, who's been doing this in the past. We do believe the reason why there's only one bidder, even though we had Ajax and some other bidders there, is there's a lot of M-dot work out this year, over $3 billion worth of work, just like last year. They had a lot of bids come due the previous week, and I believe that's the cause of not getting bidders. We've had Cal Act before. So I think next year, we'll see maybe a little bit more competitive nature, but there's just a lot of work to be done and a few contractors do the work. That's why you see the one bid.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Zalinsik, for that explanation. Anyone from the council? Yes, Councilman Morgan.
Yes, I would just like to offer approving for consent.
Okay. Councilman Morgan has offered an approving on consent. If there's any others? No? Anyone from the audience? Thank you. We have an approving then. 18 then is a request to amend the contract with OHM Advisors for construction engineering services for the 2023 asphalt road program. This is brought to us from Engineering. Go right ahead.
Thank you, Vice President. Again, when we do the construction, the CE portion of this is based on the contract amount per our agreement through QBS. As you're aware, OHM has been involved in this project since 2002 when we first initiated the millage. I think Mark's retired. He's got nine more years to go on the next phase of this, but he's been with OHM for 30 years. So he's very useful in making sure that we do the right fixes with the asset management program. So I applaud him and the efforts that we do, an effort to make sure that, again, we maximize the tax dollars, getting as many streets as we can get done. And with your approval, looking for the CE, based on that amount, for the amount of $456,384, and that includes testing, inspection, and making sure the quality meets what we're putting down, so we have a long-lasting road. So with that, we're offering your, asking for your approval for that, for the CE portion, starting in April through typically end of October. Thank you.
Great. Councilman McCullough.
OHM is a great partner with the city. We appreciate everything. I'd be happy to offer an approving on consent.
Thank you. Any others? Seeing and hearing none? Anyone from the audience? No one from the audience? Madam Clerk, we have an approving on consent. 19 is an award of contract from the Engineering Division for the 2023 Concrete Road Maintenance Selective Slab Program.
Thank you, Madam President. As you know, in the past, the last four years, we've been doing some road repairs that are areas where maybe the trees heaved up the pavement, where the drainage has been an issue, where they've gutter grinded the areas before. We're trying to get positive drainage along the curb to get to the low point. So with that, we've had success in the last four or five years of doing, you know, $600 to $800,000 worth of programs. And then obviously, some majorities may have to have the trees removed in order to do the road work, because again, the pavement's been heaved. We look at locations that have been called in. There's about 200 locations on a spreadsheet that roads and engineering keep track of. With that, those are the miscellaneous locations. We have 23 to be done this year. And then in addition to that, we have 14 street segments in various segments of the city, which there's about three miles of road improvements that will occur based on that bid that came in. So AW has been, again, aggressively helping us out since 2008 with these concrete programs, with the millage. The good thing is we had five or four bidders provide bids. We had, I think, over 10 bidders come for the concrete itself. And if you look at the bidding that took place, Great Lakes was a little bidder at just over $1.6 million. Next one was Ciparone at $1.7, GV spent at $1.9, and Sentry at $2.2. So we obviously want to take advantage of the good bid pricing for the concrete portion is obviously it's, we got it early out for bids, and there's an opportunity for us to and there's an opportunity for us to take advantage of their pricing and get their booked work done. So I'm requesting approval through, um, to have Great Lakes in the amount of one million six hundred and forty-six dollars and eight hundred and three dollar, I'm sorry, one hundred, six hundred and forty-six thousand eight hundred and three dollars with sixty inspector dates, which basically would involve just two and a half months. So they'll get in. This will be the first job, getting, getting the work completed, and obviously we'll have A W to provide the CE and the next, uh, item on the agenda. But as part of this, you'll read that, again, fifty-one trees will have to be, uh, removed as part of this, and I provided the various species. But again, a lot of these have been areas where they were gutter ground, and they heaved up the pavement to the point where we can't do anything else except, um, do some of that areas. But we, we are looking for different ways to save as many trees as we can out there, especially, uh, the oak trees and various landmark trees that obviously are, are special to the, uh, city. And, you know, obviously being a tree city, we want to save those locations.
Thank you, Mr. Zalinsik. Um, Councilman Danovic.
Thank you, Madam Vice President. Uh, thanks, Mr. Zalinsik. Can you explain the difference between the total bid and the total bid with crew days?
Yeah, so what happens is, um, the total bid is basically including the crew days, so that's separately. We, we back that out, and you'll see the next item, which is for construction engineering. So when we, when we approve the consultant for construction engineering, it includes having them have a testing, uh, uh, engineer on site, uh, their inspector, and providing some, uh, construction administration. So it's all rolled in one. The contractors held to sixty days of inspection out there. If they go over, then they get penalized and it gets deducted from their, their, uh, bid, uh, their payment. If they, you know, if they're under typically, which they aren't, uh, there's maybe a, um, the, you know, a setup for them to get back that money. But typically, we try to, they try to bid it, you know, we put minimum days, which was sixty, into just maximizing the, the amount of work we believe that needs to be done. Some people put more in there because they'll go someplace else and do work, you know, and then come back knowing that they may take eighty days, knowing that they have another job close by. They're trying to dugle, juggle the two jobs. But we know from this bid that, uh, Great Lakes is doing sixty days. They're going to come in. They're going to knock this out. If you look for the other, other bid days, one forty-three, ninety days, one forty. So we want to try to get these repairs done as soon as possible. And then again, we're benefiting from the sixty days of inspection.
I think with the team effort between A W and the phenomenal work that they do, and then the Engineering Department and, and Great Lakes, I think, uh, we'll be able to get it done as fast as possible. So I appreciate that. I'd like to offer an approving consent. There's no objection from my colleagues.
Thank you. Thank you. Yes, go right ahead, Mr. Councilman.
Through the chair to Mr. Zalinsik. I know you brought up, uh, the fifty trees. Um, my, eh, eh, the, the, the worry I have is, is, I mean, are the fifty, do we have a blue skies type of scenario again? Or are you foreseeing us to be more spread out?
So on the, uh, tree segments that you'll see, probably you're going to have a couple of segments that are going to be, um, areas that you can, uh, look at. It's going to be probably, um, Ronnie Lane from Linden to Henry Avenue, and then basically, I believe, um, Dover from Linville to Harvey. Again, those are bigger trees over there that have caused a pavement, uh, to heave up, whatever. We can't, the right of way is so small. It's what we get in the right of way between the curb and the sidewalk. It's overgrown its area itself. So in order for us to fix the pavement properly, um, we would have to remove the tree. Now, there was options of, you know, can you take the curb and put it out into the right of way itself? But the problem is, is, as you know, the plow trucks would then damage the curb. The city would be responsible for fixing the damaged plow, and then it'd be, except, you know, expensive fix, and then the people that are plowing have to be aware of it. The, the DPW has different people that go out in various subdivisions and plow. They don't recognize that that area has a special area where the curb's, you know, bumped out. But we do try to look at locations where we can save the trees and which we can, instead of using a, um, and these, these areas have a, uh, wood form, whatever, try to, you know, try to get close as we can to the tree root and put the wood form in there, and then try to, um, maximize that patch without damaging the trees best we can.
No, I, I appreciate that, and I know, uh, y- you know, your, your department does a great job, um, analyzing. I know Minister Moore will, you know, look five thousand times at, at the things. Just be cognizant. We know the residents are very passionate. So, uh, we know you have the best interest, so I appreciate it.
Thank you. And again, we all send a letter to the residents where we take the tree down. But again, there are going to be a couple of streets that there's significant trees that'll be impacted. But again, Ronnie and, um, I, I believe, like I said, uh, uh, the other, other street there, um, we, we gotta definitely, um, you know, try to be cognizant of that. But, uh, those right of ways, the, the way the right of way is, unfortunately, we.
And they were the wrong trees to be originally put in there. No, we totally get it. If you're transparent with the residents, it's the best we can do.
Thank you.
Yeah. That was going to be my concern as well, uh, Mr. Zalinsik, after going through that, uh.
Blue skies.
Other site, yeah. Um, I think once people are communicated with and kind of reasoning behind it, like cause and effect, um, I think that'll help out a great deal. Um, you know, rather than just a standardized letter, "Hi, we're in your area. We're going to rip down your trees," type of thing.
As you know, COVID didn't help much either.
No.
Madam President, during that time, whatever. It's hard to have a meeting, you know, we couldn't have the night meetings that we normally would have. And I, I, I completely understand, you know, obviously we're a tree city. We're coming up to celebrate that as we had in April, right? So we definitely want to maintain our tree status and obviously, um, do the best we can to salvage those, those landmark trees.
No, and I know, I know you're ki- you know, very aware of all that, but if we can get, you know, that explained in a letter, because a lot of people don't come out and some do to those town halls, public hearings, whatever you call them these days, but yeah, appreciate it.
Yes, we, we definitely want to communicate as much as we can to residents what's happening, so that way.
Perfect.
Everyone has a feeling about a tree, whether you like it, don't like it, but obviously they help out in the environment.
Absolutely. Thank you so much. Okay, anybody else? No? Anyone from the audience? No. Um, item twenty then is a request to amend the contract with Anderson Erickson, Erickstein and, um, Westrick, uh, Inc. for construction engineering services for the two thousand twenty-three concrete road maintenance selective slab program. This brought to us by the Engineering Division.
Thank you, Madam President. Again, uh, this, this is with, uh, Scott Lock with A W. They have a great team that helps out with the inspection portion of this. Again, we want to make sure when we remove the road, it's put back, uh, properly. Uh, we, um, uh, utilize our survey crews to make sure that we, again, may have to change the road profile a little bit on some of these areas so they get to the low point, because a lot of these inlets are farther apart. But based on that one-point-six million dollar, um, bid, um, we are having, um, A W provide the testing inspection and some contract administration, any amount of two hundred thousand, two-twenty-six, and asking for your approval. I will tell you, uh, we have the bid opening for twenty-three C coming up on March seventh. We had to curtail that back. Um, so you'll see us coming forward with that, and then we'll also bring, uh, A W's, uh, CE part of that for twenty-three C and the additional portion for twenty-two C, which we added on to Hard Rock for one-point-five million. So the next council meeting, we'll have two items for the CE, one for the one-point-five million that was extended for twenty-two C. Then we'll have the twenty-three bid, which again, we may have to cut some streets ba- based on the bids. We're hoping they're competitive, because the concrete seems like it's more competitive, uh, lately with the local contractors, and do as many streets as we can. And then we'll bring the CE portion, uh, with A W on, on the next meeting on, uh, March third, uh, March thir- or, I'm sorry, late in March, not the thirteenth, the following week.
Yeah, super. Thanks. Uh, direction, comment? Go right ahead.
Uh, A W, again, I know we, we touched base with O H M, but we appreciate everything that you guys have done in the partnership. I'd be happy to offer an approving for consent.
We have an approving on consent. Any others? Anyone comment? No? Anybody from the audience? Hearing and seeing no one. Madam Clerk, you have that correct? Yep. Alrighty. Alright, that concludes this portion of our meeting. We will now go to audience communication. Anyone wishing to speak to the council on anything that wasn't on our agenda this evening? Please come forward to the podium, my left or right. I don't see anyone, council. Um, I think, uh, we can, um, stand the jerk?